Good evening, everybody. It has been confirmed that we do have a quorum present. So with that being said, I'm going to call the Millville Annual Town Meeting of May 13th to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to honor our civil servants and military and frontline personnel who are dedicating their lives protecting our freedoms, safety, and democracy, both at home and abroad. Thank you, you may be seated. Good evening, everyone, and happy to see everyone here tonight assembled for our annual town meeting again. At this time, I would like to take a minute and introduce everybody on the stage. I'm Jackie Lima, the moderator. Do we want to start down the end?
I'm Ciara Gallagher, FinCom.
Helge Liedke, Finance Committee.
Beth Barrett, Chair, FinCom.
Diane Lockwood, Town Clerk.
Andrew Alward, Board of Selectmen.
Matthew Maile, Board of Selectmen.
Joseph Baker, Board of Selectmen Secretary.
Richard Remmels, Vice Chair.
Jennifer Gill, Chair.
And we have behind us Peter Caruso, Town Administrator, and Brian Riley, our Town Council. If you've not done so already, please take a moment to silence your cellphones. As a reminder, if there are any visitors tonight who are not registered voters of Millville, please make sure that you're wearing an observer badge and please take a seat in the front row, just so that we can see where you are designated and not counting as votes. If you are here as a registered voter, please be sure that you did check in at the back with the clerks and receive your yellow voter registration card. We'll be using them this evening to vote, so it's important that everybody has one if you'd like your vote counted. You should have also picked up a packet in the back with the check-in. This contains the articles that we'll be voting on this evening. There's also a copy of the budget that we'll be voting. And the last page is a handout from the Finance Committee with the stabilization and free cash balances that we'll be referencing tonight as well. If anybody did not get a packet, please raise your hand, we can have one of the clerks run one down for you. I'd just like to take a minute to review a few procedural rules to ensure that we have a productive meeting tonight. As is the case with every town meeting, all attendees here tonight are expected to be respectful of everyone in attendance and of the meeting itself. You don't have to agree with everyone here, but you must remain respectful. As the moderator, I have the responsibility to ensure that this meeting maintains that standard and to ask anybody who is not conducting him or herself in that manner to leave. Going forward, I will read an article and a motion, it will be moved and seconded. There will be a three-minute limit for the person who moves the article to make a presentation or statement about it, other than the budget, which Finance Committee will be handling. Any resident who wishes to speak for or against an article may raise their hand, be recognized, come down to one of the front microphones. You'll be asked to state your name and your address clearly to be entered into the record. And you'll be given up to three minutes to talk. At the conclusion of the three minutes, I will thank you for your comment, you'll need to stop speaking and take your seat again. After every resident who wishes to speak has a turn, anyone wishing to speak again may have another three minutes. As a reminder, all questions and discussions should be directed to the moderator. If appropriate, I will ask someone on our stage to respond as appropriate. Please do not address a previous speaker, town official, or other resident directly. Discussion and questions must be relevant to the motion that we are voting on, it is my job to ensure this. I will limit or stop discussion if a comment is not within the scope of an article that we are being voting on. Throughout the meeting, there may be instances where I will allow a non-resident to speak if they can contribute relevant information or offer expertise to any article that we are voting on, provided that there are no objections. This could include what is not limited to our Town Administrator, Town Council, Superintendent, outside members of the school district, or department heads. Without any further ado, we'll commence the business of this meeting. I'll propose a motion, someone on stage will move it. So the wording that we say might be a little bit different than the warrant in your hands, but I'm sure you'll be able to follow along. If there are any questions, please raise your hand, you can come to the microphone and we'll get through this together. Thank you very much. Okay, so for Article 1, Monetary Increases. I'd be looking for a motion that the town vote that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items as recommended by the Finance Committee presented at this town meeting shall be out of order unless such motion or amendment states the source of funding as being from available free cash or the line item, article, or other funding sources that will be reduced by the same amount. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
There's been a motion by Helge, is there a second? Second, second by Claudette. Helge, would you like to discuss the article?
Yes, please. So this is one of the first articles. That is a standard article we see at almost every town meeting. So if anyone would recommend to move a line item of budget from one location of the budget to another, which is not already recommended by us, you would have to indicate where the funds are coming from and where they are going to, so in and out.
Thank you. Are there any questions in regards to this article? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It passes unanimous. For Article 2, Bills for a Prior Year. At this time, we've been notified there are no bills for a prior year, so I would be looking for a motion to take no action on this article.
I make a motion.
Ciara Gallagher makes the motion, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Helge. Do we need any discussion on this? We have no bills from the previous year. We're good? Any questions from the audience? I took that one from you, Ciara, sorry. Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes and I declare it unanimous. Article 3, For Snow and Ice Deficit. I'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to transfer $48,644.72 from free cash to fund the deficit incurred with the snow and ice budget per Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31D. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Claudette, is there a second?
I second.
Second made by Ciara. Claudette, do you want to?
This article is to pay the balance of $48,644.72 that we owe from the snow and ice removal. This is the amount above the $80,000 that was already budgeted.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your card. The motion passes and I declare it unanimous. Article 4 is the Highway Department, Chapter 90. So we'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to accept and expand such sum or sums of money allotted or to be allotted to the town from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 90, or under any other state roadway reimbursement programs for the fiscal year 2025, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a contract or contracts with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division for such purposes, and further, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow in anticipation of 100% reimbursement of said amounts pursuant to Mass General Law 44 or any other enabling authority. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Claudette, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Helge.
This is allowing the town to accept and spend the state funds for our roads.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes and I declare it unanimous. Article 5, For the Cable Licensing Fees. I'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to transfer from the PEG, PEG Access and Cable Related Funds Account, the sum of $7,500, to be forwarded to the Superintendent of Schools of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for use by the Director of Library and Media Services to enhance the curriculum offerings that are available in the school district. Is there a motion?
Everybody awake now? Motion.
So there was a motion made by Joe Baker, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Richard Remmels. Joe, did you want to speak to this?
No comments from me, thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The motion passes and I declare it unanimous. Article 6, The Highway and Bridge Stabilization Fund. I'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the amount of $45,000, to be placed in the Highway and Bridge Stabilization Fund. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Jennifer Gill, is there a second? Second, second by Andrew Alward. Jen, would you like to speak to the article?
Sure. Last year, we established a stabilization account for repairs for roads and bridges in the town, and currently the balance is $80,000. So with this addition of $45,000 from free cash, I'll bring the balance to $125,000. And this enables us to have cash on hand to repair roads, bridges, et cetera. So, that's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes and I declare it unanimous. The Capital Stabilization Fund. At this time, there will be nothing deposited into the capital stabilization, so we'd be looking for a motion to take no action on this article.
So moved.
Motion to take no action by Jen Gill, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Ciara. Jen, did you want to speak?
Sure. So we just, the goal is to keep the capital stabilization account at $200,000, and you can see the balance is at $206,282. So it's above the minimum balance that we're looking to hold.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the audience? And just to be clear, the last page in your pamphlet is where Jen just quoted those numbers from. That very last page in there has the stabilization balances, just as a point of reference. Okay, so there's been a motion made, there's been a second, no discussion. Everyone in favor of taking no action on the article, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes and I declare it unanimous. Article 8, The General Stabilization Fund. At this time, we'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to transfer from free cash, an amount of $175,000, to be placed in the general stabilization fund. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Helge, is there a second?
I second.
Second made by Claudette. Did you want to speak to the article?
Yes. So the current balance in the general stabilization is $950,651. We would have allotted an additional $175,000 from free cash this season to bring the ending balance to $1,125,651. And so this article is to move that $175,000 to increase the general stabilization fund.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The motion passes. Article 9 would be to fund other post-employment benefits. And at this time, we would be looking for a motion to take no action on this article.
So moved.
Motion made by Richard Remmels, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Matthew. Richard, do you want to speak to it?
I don't think there's much to say about this thing, the current budget. I don't think we can do much with it, so it's adequate to fund it.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of taking no action on Article 9, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes and I declare it unanimous. So at this point, we're at Article 10 for the fiscal year, I should say 2025, right? I found a typo. All right, 2025 budget is what we're voting on this evening. So what I would like to do is let Claudette, the Chair of the Finance Committee, speak for a minute, and then we'll go through the budget.
Okay, so we have a higher-than-usual free cash this year, and we are using it to fund the budget and put it into our stabilization accounts. FinCom tried to stick to the 3% increase across all town departments, however, there are some notable exceptions to the budget, and that was BMR. The school decreased their FY '25 budget significantly from the FY '24 budget. However, due to the state formulas, Millville's local contribution increase was higher than 3%. The FinCom also recommended an amount of $70,000 to be invested in the fire department. A business plan was presented by the fire chief and the safety committee to increase the staffing levels. According to the business plan, the infusion of cash and personnel should result in higher billable revenues in the fiscal year 2026 and beyond. At this time, the budget has a deficit of $438,736, which can only be filled with the use of free cash. Long-term, this is not sustainable. If revenues do not increase in FY 2026, or if free cash is not available, we would be looking at significant cuts to our 2026 budget, or it could result in an override. At this point, FinCom does not recommend an override, but hard decisions will need to be made going forward.
Thank you. Okay, so at this point, what we'll do is we'll walk through the budget, the department line totals, like we always do. If anybody would like to hold a budget line, please yell out "hold," hold up your yellow card so I can see who's holding it. We'll vote through all the not-held items first, and then we'll go through and make our adjustments on anything that's held. Are there any questions about the budget? Okay, here we go. Town Moderator, zero. Board of Selectmen, $579. Town Administrator, $86,885. Hold, Town Administrator, who, Paula Lett. Finance Committee, $150. Finance Committee Reserve Fund, $29,400. Town Accountant, $55,246. Town Audit, $24,000. Board of Assessors, $60,965. Treasurer Collector, $119,591. Legal, $40,000. Technology, $35,000. Town Clerk, $71,162. Conservation Commission... Do we have the numbers in here? Did read out, okay. Got it. Conservation Commission, $900. Planning Zoning, $17,467. Town Hall, Old and New Buildings, $166,497. Annual Report, $500. Police Department, $690,508. Fire Department, $404,717. Building and Zoning Enforcement, $52,180. Civil Defense, $850. Animal Control, $15,000. Tree Warden, $13,500. Public Safety Communications, $99,200. MES Grounds Maintenance, $120,000. Blackstone Valley Tech, $313,187. Norfolk Agricultural Technical, $284,290. Blackstone Millville Regional, $3,770,576. Highway Department, $194,315. Highway Snow and Ice Removal, $80,000. Townwide Fuel, $36,000. Highway Street Sweeping, $21,000. Stormwater Management, $35,500. Public Street Lighting, $22,000. Board of Health, $36,592. Council on Aging, $60,300. Veteran Services, $10,500. Library, $51,540. Recreation, $3,000. Memorial Park, $1,000. Debt Services, $230,656. Regional Retirement, $228,349. Did I skip? 364 Memorial Park, $1,000. 366 Historical Commission, $675. Thank you. Memorial Day Celebration, $500. Those aren't great out, those aren't, okay, got it. All right, we got to Regional Retirement, $228,349. And then it looks like we want... Unemployment Insurance, $3,000. Health Insurance Fringe Benefits, $146,000. Dental Insurance Plan, $5,400. Medicare Fringe Benefits on behalf of Employees, $20,600. Other Insurance, $130,000. And we do not need to vote the grand total because we did have a hold. So for everything that was not held, other than line 14, are there any questions or discussion from the audience? You can say something, Sean? You're part of the audience.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that the Board of Selectmen, we voted on their recommendation on line 252 on MES water operations, and it passed 4 to 1.
This evening?
This evening, in the meeting that was posted at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Okay, so... We're going to vote for everything other than line 14 at this time. All those in favor of all the budget totals as read other than line 14, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Anyone opposed to the budget? Okay. The motion passes. At this time, Paul, if you'd like to come up, state your name and address, and we can look at Town Administrator, line 14, currently recommended and funded, or recommended for funding, $86,885.
Paul Lett, 382 Chestnut Hill Road. I'd like to make a motion to reduce Town Administrator professional salary to $78,685, which would make it a total increase of $2,200.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Kathy Lett. Would you like three minutes to make your recommendation?
I don't need three minutes. We heard from our own Finance Committee that the guidance that was set forth by the Town Administrator was 3%. Why did he not hold himself to the same standard of 3%? So 3% is actually $2291 and change, so I reduced it to an increase of $2,200 because he actually should be holding himself to a higher standard.
Okay, thank you. At this time, Jen, did you want to speak?
Yep. So this is within the Town Administrator's contract, so he has increases based on steps and lanes. So that's why the increase is as stated here. So it's a contractual obligation that we need to fulfill.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on line 14, Town Administrator? As long as nobody else wants to, I'm going to let Jen speak again.
Just want to say our Town Administrator is great. He provides tremendous support to the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, especially in these very difficult financial times. He has a very strong finance background, so I really feel that Peter earns every penny of his salary.
Thank you.
I would like to say I agree with Jen, and it is contractual, his salary.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Aaron?
Aaron Binaco, Albert Drive. So when you're saying it's contractual, is there an actual evaluation process, or is he just handed the 5% because it's contractual?
Jen, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, so Peter and I meet weekly and talk about things I'd like him to do better and differently, and things I think he's doing a very good job on. We did have a formal review last year, I think? I can't quite remember. We haven't done the one for this year yet, but we do a formal review in executive session.
So it is just handed because it's contractual? Like, you're not saying, "We recommend this today because of his performance, it's because it was contractual?"
So the reason why I asked to speak the second time is because I do believe Peter's performance is excellent. So we haven't had the formal review yet for FY '24, but Peter has a very strong finance background, and I think it's incredibly valuable to Millville to have him as a resource. And his performance, as far as, I can do his review right now, as far as I'm concerned, his performance is excellent.
Well, you're 1 of 5, so, and a full town in front of you, so, I mean, is there a formal process for it, Jen?
So I think we heard that there is a forum that's done annually. It has not been done yet this year, but it was done last year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak before I let Paul speak again that hasn't spoke? Go ahead, Paul.
All right. I believe Brian Riley can confirm or deny this, but any municipal contracts are contingent upon town meeting approval of the funding.
Thank you. Any other questions? So right now, we would be voting on line 14, not at the amount as recommended, but as motioned by Paul, in the amount of $78,685. All those in favor of the reduced line, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion does not pass. So now I'll go back, and I'd be looking for a motion to fund line 14, Town Administrator, in the original amount as requested, of $86,885. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Jen Gill, is there a second? Seconded by Claudette. Any further discussion on the original amount? All those in favor of the original amount, $86,885, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise their cards. The motion passes. So at this time, we would be looking for a motion to approve the entire budget.
So moved.
In the amount of... It's okay. The amount of, she's just excited to get there, $7,789,277.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Helge. Any further discussion on the budget? All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes. Article 11 is the BMR, Other Post-Employment Benefits. Are we, was this, this was funded through the actual budget process, so we'd be looking for a motion not to take no action on this article, is that correct, school? Is that correct, School Committee? So I'd be looking for a motion to take no action on the article.
So moved.
Thank you, Claudette. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Andrew. Thank you. Claudette, do you want to speak to the article?
Because the budget was approved, there's, you know, we need no action.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the audience about this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of taking no action on the article, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article twelve, the BMR School Committee's stipends. We would be looking for a motion that the Town vote to authorize the members of the Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee to be compensated for their services as such members, and to set the annual amount of said compensation at fifteen hundred dollars per member, and eighteen hundred for the chairman, as printed in the warrant. Is there a motion? Tara? Is there a second? Was that Jerry? Jerry Finn? Okay. Does anybody want to speak on the article?
Erin Binaco, Albert Drive. Similar to the OPEB, it is already funded within the budget. However, what's being voted on here, and I think it gets confusing to those on stage, is the stipulations for what it is paid. If a member does not participate in at least sixty percent of their meetings, they're not paid. So it's actually protection to our townspeople for our elected officials that aren't going to show up for what they were elected for. But I think we are standing here each year without recommendations because nobody wants to see... Nobody from the stage wants to see the payments go out. But the money was already funded in the budget line items, and this vote is basically to approve what is written in our regional agreement, which is that members have to attend a certain amount of meetings to receive their stipend.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or discussion from the audience? Go ahead, Jen.
So I don't... I'm not confused on the payments made to the School Committee. The reason why I oppose this is because no one on this stage gets a stipend, and yet we all manage to make more than sixty percent of our meetings. And you see how tight the budget is every single year, and every single person on this stage says, "You know what? I'm not going to take this money from the Town and put a further financial burden. I'm going to put this back into the budget to be used on other things." So that's why I don't take a stipend, or why we vote every year for the Board of Selectmen not to have a stipend. I don't need this incentive to make more than sixty percent of my meetings.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I speak on behalf of the School Committee, or who has to be a resident?
You're supposed to be a resident. I think we've... I think we've heard enough.
But he is the chair.
You are the chair, and if I felt like there was anything that needed to be educated to the people about the topic, I would definitely let you speak. But I think at this point, we've heard from School Committee. We've heard from Board of Selectmen. I'm gonna move the question at this point. Thank you. At this point, I'm gonna call for the vote, so... Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, Mr. Gomash, come on down.
Norm Gomash, Hawkins Road. Does any other member of a commission or board in this town get a stipend?
I'm gonna defer that to the Finance Committee. Claudette, are there any other stipends built in?
No.
Okay.
No.
I didn't think so.
All right, I'm going to call for the vote. All of those in favor of Article twelve, please signify by raising your cards. All of those opposed, please raise your cards. Can I get an official count in the back? How many people are checked in at this point? Thank you. The motion passes. Article thirteen, cable appropriations. We would be looking for a motion that the Town vote to appropriate thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from the PEG Access and Cable Fund, available fund balance, to fund the cable operations for FY twenty-twenty-five, starting July first, twenty-twenty-four, through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, under the direction of the Cable Coordinator. Said funds to be spent on professional wages in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Part-time wages, two thousand five hundred dollars. And expenses, fifteen thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Jennifer Gill. Is there a second? Seconded by Andrew Alward. Jen, do you want to speak to it?
Sure, this enables us to have our meetings recorded so that you can watch them on YouTube over and over again forever.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article thirteen, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article fourteen, the Board of Health member as a Board of Health agent. We'd be looking for a motion that the Town vote pursuant to General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section twenty-one A, to authorize the Board of Health to appoint a board member to serve as the health agent. Is there a motion? Motion made by Jennifer Gill. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Roland Barrett. Jen, do you want to speak to it? You're gonna use your microphone.
So this is to allow a Board of Health member to also serve as a health agent. So I believe this is... So this has already been in process in Millville, but this makes it just a little cleaner for us in terms of Board of Health activities moving forward.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the article? Come on down.
Good evening. Rich Cravelle, thirty-nine Grove Street. A health agent, I think it used to be Lenny Izzo at one time on that. There's a part-time on it. He was for Milford. He used to do multiple towns. If he's not available anymore, this person, I guess, would step in and take the place. Are there certain other requirements that this person or training they'd have to go through and be certified prior to be able to do this job?
Thank you. So I would defer that to the back table?
I think it's entirely up to the Board of Health.
It's entirely up to the Board of Health, and this really just memorializes current practice because the Board of Health has been using an agent to do certain inspections. The person would be subject to, you know, ethics laws and so forth, so there's no conflicts.
Are there any further questions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article fourteen, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you down the end. The motion passes. Article fifteen, BBT. I'd be looking for a motion that the Town vote to approve the ten thousand dollar debt authorized by the... Ten million. Few extra zeros in there, huh, Jerry? You snuck them in. Ten million dollar debt authorized by the Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional District School Committee on February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and amended by its actions of March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, to pay costs of roof reconstruction and the replacement to energy-efficient rooftop HVAC units at the Blackstone Valley Regional Vocational Technical High School, located at sixty-five Pleasant Street, Upton, Mass, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. Is there a motion? Motion made by Jerry. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Roland Barrett. Come on down, Jerry. Three minutes about the article.
Jeez.
Please.
Guilty. This is... Just to let everybody know here, this is an action that BBT wishes to enable the thirteen municipalities. We're part of thirteen towns. Within that municipalities, we're asking your permission tonight for us to continue to go with the accelerated repair program for the MSBA. We need to get your approval tonight first. Say, "Okay," go ahead. You may go ahead and go and ask for that permission if we get it tonight. Then we can go, and we'll continue on. The Millville cost on this, if there was a cost, would not be until FY twenty-six. It is not any cost in FY twenty-five. And additionally to that, the first step in this is to have an advance plan. We had that in the ready for months. The MSBA opened up, and they had a window of six weeks. You had to have that thing shovel ready and ready to go. Boom, put it in. Soon as you put that in, the next thing we need to do is have the Town action tonight to say, "Yes, you may go ahead and proceed with that." The actual account for Millville, what it would come down to is... Let me see, I'll give you an exact number here. Comes down to sixteen dollars and forty-seven cents because we have two-point-one percent of the total share. Our other partners, our other twelve towns, those other twelve towns pay for ninety-eight percent of the total bill. We're only gonna pay for two percent. That two percent comes out to be sixteen dollars and forty-seven cents per household, per year. And that's only if we don't get the fifty-three percent reimbursement from the MSBA, which we're hopeful to get. I cannot tell you tonight that we have it, but we're hopeful to get it. If that was the case, it would split that thing by fifty-three percent less. And also, the HVAC units that we need, thirty-five of them on top of the roof, because the other ones are up there for thirty years. It's a sixty-five-year-old building. Those HVAC units that are up there, we're gonna be taking those off and putting them way more efficient units than what they have from thirty years ago. So all in all, it's an opportunity to replace the roof. We've found some wet spots in it, thirty-year-old roof. Replace the HVAC, and the cost... The opportunity for here for Millville is gonna end up costing sixteen dollars and forty-seven cents if we get no reimbursement. It'd be half that if we get what traditionally has been a fifty-three percent reimbursement from the MSBA. They were hopeful to get that, but they don't have it until sometime this summer. So that's the... Tonight, you're voting... Go ahead, keep going and try to get that. That's where you're voting on tonight.
Twenty seconds to spare. Well done, Jerry. Thank you.
No bell tonight.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions in regards to the article?
So the estimated cost to the citizens of Millville, the taxpayers, sixteen dollars and fifty-one cents per year. Forty-seven... How many years?
It's twenty years, I'll block.
Okay.
Thank you.
And again, if I may, that's it.
Let me just see if anybody else would like to speak. Are there any other questions from the floor? Come on down.
Rich Cravelle, thirty-nine Grove Street. Jerry, you mentioned sixteen dollars a household on that. What is the total cost to the town of Millville for the project?
It'd be two-hundred and ten thousand dollars over twenty years.
Thank you.
Divided out by eleven hundred households.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the audience? Jerry, do you have new information that you need to add, or...
No.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor of Article fifteen, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article sixteen for the MES water operations. This ended up getting paid through our budget. On Article ten, it was incorporated in there. So at this time, I'd be looking for a motion to take no action on the article.
So moved.
Motion made by Jen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Claudette. Any discussion where we're just not funding the article? It was funded through the budget.
Yeah, it's in line two fifty-two, so it's already been funded.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of no action on Article sixteen, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article seventeen, zoning bylaw change to the overlay district. So Article seventeen is written out in your packet. This is the one, Pam, that has a typo. So Pam Maloney, Chair of the Planning Board, is going to come down and make an amended motion to what is written in your warrant.
Yes. In Article seventeen, under Section one, Renewable Energy Overlay District, we have a list of map and parcel numbers on here, and the parcels numbers eight, nine, ten, and ten-point-one are actually in here twice. So as this is written, we'd like to move it forward without the second parcel number, eight, nine, ten, and ten-point-one, having that stricken from the language of the text.
Thank you. So that's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Andrew. Pam, do you want to speak to the general article?
Sure thing. Our planning board has been working...
She made an amended... She was making an amended motion based on the text. So that was her motion. And then Andrew seconded the amended motion. Right, we're discussing it. We're discussing it, and then we'll call for the vote. Thank you.
Our planning board has been working through some outdated and incorrect language in our zoning bylaws. So this particular item is to do exactly that. It's to clarify and to clearly state the overlay districts that are in the zoning bylaws. Some of these are actually missing from the current text.
Thank you. Is there any other questions in regards to Article seventeen? And the planning... Did the planning board have a hearing on this? And what was the recommendation?
The planning board did hold a public hearing on this item, and our recommendation was to move it forward.
Thank you. Okay, because this is a change to the zoning bylaw, it will require two-thirds of the room to approve this for it to pass. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? It is unanimous. All right, Article eighteen, another zoning bylaw change permitted as a homophone. So we would be looking for a motion here that the Town vote to amend the Millville zoning bylaws exactly as printed in the warrant for Article eighteen. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion. Can you state your name?
Jason Mealy.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Matthew. Okay. Jason, did you want to speak to this one?
Sure. I think I've got the easiest thing tonight. Jason Mealy, five-ten Chestnut Hill. So going through the bylaws, we're finding some very kind of simple mistakes that are easily changeable. We are literally talking about the word permitted or permitted as to having a permit or whether allowed by a permit. So we're looking just to clean up that language and take out confusing things, and that's why there's so many lines of it.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the audience? And there was a hearing held on this, and...
Yes, it was a five-to-zero recommendation.
Five-to-zero recommendation by the planning board. Perfect. Thank you. And again, with the zoning, we're gonna require a two-thirds majority of the room to pass this. So all those in favor of Article eighteen as written, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article nineteen, the zoning bylaw change for site plan review text changes. We would be looking for a motion that the Town vote to amend the Millville zoning bylaws as printed in the warrant for Article nineteen. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Jason Mealy again. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Did you want to speak to this one as well?
Yeah, sure. So once again, we're just trying to clean up some language. This one's in relation to site plan review. And basically, everything that's here that's written, it's just to... And basically, everything that's here that's written, it's just to clean up some language. It's not any big policy change.
Thank you. And there was a public hearing?
Public hearing, the board recommended five-to-zero.
Thank you so much. Is there any questions from the audience on this one? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 19, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Passes and I declare it unanimous. It required a two-thirds and we got it. All right. Article 20, the zoning bylaw changes, Planning Board Membership and Duties. We'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to amend the Millville zoning bylaws as printed in the warrant for Article 20. Is there a motion? Pam Maloney made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We'll give it to Rich, his name's already typed in here.
Ah, gotcha. This thing's rigged.
All right. Pam, did you want to speak to this one?
Yes, this is another attempt at cleaning up our zoning bylaws. Currently, there is no language in our zoning bylaw about what a planning board member does. So we're looking to amend to include that language in our zoning.
Thank you.
We did have a public hearing and we voted five-nothing in favor.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the audience in regards to Article 20? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 20, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed to Article 20? The motion passes, I declare it unanimous. It required the two-thirds and we got that. Article 21, amend the town of Millville bylaws, Chapter 20 personnel. So we'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to amend the town bylaw, Chapter 20, Section 20-8D, compensation system by replacing the existing classification and compensation plan effective July 1st, 2023, with the classification and compensation plan effective July 1st, 2024, as printed in the warrant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Matthew, is there a second? Seconded by Jen Gill. Do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, so this article just provides for some bylaw updates to the existing classification and compensation plan needed. And they reflect the most recent plan amounts. And they are adjusted for annual increases, budget amounts appropriated.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 21, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes and I declare it unanimous. At this time, I'm going to make my annual plea. If anybody in the audience would love to join our Finance Committee members up here on stage, please reach out, moderator@millvilleMA.org. We also have lots of open positions within the town. If anybody has extra time to volunteer, please get in touch with Peter, myself, Jen Gill. We will be happy to help you find a volunteer opportunity. Obviously, we can't do this without volunteers and people, so it's really important. Again, moderator@millvilleMA.org. If anybody's interested in serving on our Finance Committee. And with that, I'd be looking for a motion to dissolve the warrant. Motion made by Jen Gill, is there a second? Seconded by Andrew. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.